Is there somebody that's not coming tonight?
Sasha, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh, hello Chancellor.
Is there somebody who's not coming tonight?
Who do we have confirmed?
Everybody's confirmed.
Okay, so there'll be, oh, there'll be four in person, okay.
Yeah, we, that was, that was the concern is that we have to, according to the new regulation of the Brown Act, even if we have people remotely, we have to have a majority or quorum doing face to face.
Of course.
Okay, it looks like we have the four members in person ready to go. Okay.
Okay.
You have four, I'm gonna go ahead and start the webinar.
Let's go ahead. Recording in progress. Good afternoon, Peralta community, welcome to the special enrollment academy meeting of the Board of Trustees. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 4:34 PM. Let's go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance. Can we have trustee Whitrow, can you lead that for us?
I'm not getting any sound from the boardroom.
I don't have any sound either, but it looks like they're concluded with the pledge of allegiance, and I said it as well.
Yeah, you don't do it, you don't hear anything when they're doing the pledge, because there's no microphones there.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to 1.3 roll call. Sasha, go ahead.
Yes ma'am, student trustee Hogan.
President.
Student trustee Latino.
Here.
Trustee Whitrow.
Here.
Trustee Johannes.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan.
Right here.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Here.
Trustee Quinlan.
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful. We'll move to 1.4 affirmation of the statement of cooperation. Over the course of the last two years, we, the PCCD Board of Trustees, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we have conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to this agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and to follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Okay, we'll move to 1.5 approval of the agenda. May I entertain a motion, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Sasha, I believe that was trustee Whitrow motion, and VP Quinlan with the second.
Thank you ma'am. Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to 1.6 public communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
Let me go confirm now.
Thank you.
No public comments, Madam President.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to our enrollment academy. We have Dr. Jackson, Dr. Joker, Dr. Herrera, and Dr. Vasconcellos.
Good afternoon, board members, Board President, Vice President. I would say our community members, but they must all be online, because I don't see anybody in the audience here. First of all, I want to thank the board for making time for this additional special meeting. We started this last year just to give a bit of historical facts, because we had some concern over how we made decisions regarding enrollment. Last year was the first year that we actually started to close the gap between what our FTES, our full-time equivalent students, which generate revenue from the state in terms of apportionment, and our employees or our FTE. And in particular, our full-time equivalent faculty, which is FTF. So, we had a special meeting last year where we really just focused on enrollment, provided information to the board, so that we would have a good foundation for future discussions regarding these issues, because they really interrelate with our budget and our planning. So, the board really liked the first meeting, and so they asked for this to be included on the agenda for this year. We usually do it about February, because we report the results from the fall semester. But that, because we had new board members and we were in the process of appointing a new board member, we moved it to this date. So, without further ado, this is a working meeting, there is no action, it's a dialogue back and forth. We provided quite a bit of resource information, but we also have a presentation. And Dr. Joker, Stephanie Joker is online. This is in her area of responsibility as a chief operations officer, as well as a deputy chancellor. And then we also hired a permanent associate vice chancellor, Dr. Tina Vasconcellos, who will be co-presenting with our associate vice chancellor of research, which is Francisco Herrera, Dr. Francisco Herrera, and Dr. Tina Vasconcellos. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that introduction, Dr. Joker, or if we can jump right into it.
I think we can jump right in Chancellor, thank you so much for the background and introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Sasha, can you load the slides?
Sasha, can you load the slides, please? Am I sharing my screen?
I think so, because, yeah, I think so.
Sasha, you need to, because we're on Zoom, and Tina and Francisco are not.
All right, give me one minute.
No, let me just, as we're waiting for the queue up, you'll notice that there's quite a few slides. We wanted to provide that as a resource, we're not gonna go through seventy-eight slides in detail, or seventy-plus slides in detail. So, as you go through the document, you'll see that there's a summary in front of each of the sections, and then the detailed documents follow. So, at one of our previous presentations, there was a question about so what? So, you're giving us all of this data, so what does it mean? So, what we did was take that to heart, and we put the so what up front, and then we provided the background slides after that for you, if you have any questions and details. But we did try to provide the so what up front. So, with that, I think we're ready to get started Sasha, right? The screen has gone blank, and there is also a log-on, but please mute your mics if you'd like to look at it a little bit closer than up on the screen, I know it's a little bit hard to see, and the one that I can look at is behind me, which is the larger one, but that way you have access to it.
Can everybody see it?
Yep, I can see it on Zoom.
Great.
Okay. Dr. Vasconcellos, Dr. Francisco Herrera.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, what we're gonna be covering today is, as Chancellor Jackson mentioned, background information, a lot of data and different elements, and the intent is to share data around enrollment and the trends and what's been happening year over year, or even over three-year period. And in addition, the idea is to, so the data that, this is the data that we use, for those that are not in our community college system or connected, you know, on the ground at the colleges. This is the data that the colleges use to inform their enrollment management plans, they're using this data to inform their ed master plans, which are coming to you, I think, at the next meeting. And, and also the work that's, the data that's used to infuse throughout the shared governance process at the colleges, but also at the district office, when we're talking about how to move forward with dual enrollment, with online versus in-person, or career education and so forth. So, that's some of what you're gonna be seeing. And then the other thing that we did is, it's tied into the SCIF, so you're gonna hear that towards the end, and then followed by the student climate survey, which is, I think, important for you to also have. Next slide, please. So, I'm not sure how well you can see this. So, what we did, kind of what I was saying earlier, so the board's really, really critical, right, in setting the tone for the district and setting and approving the mission, which you've done last year, I believe, or in the last year and a half. And at the core of the mission, the vision and values, of course, is our students. Your board goals are set also based on the mission and what you want, what you intend to work on going forward. Off of that, then, the colleges do their educational master plans, which is happening now. There, we have a different process, which I think you've heard previously, whereas the colleges are doing their plans, and then what we're doing is we're writing sections on district supports from the district educational master plan in support of the colleges reaching their goals. From the educational master plan, which is essentially your guiding star for five years, it's related to and connected to your strategic enrollment management plan at the colleges, and also the equity plans. It also informs the college facility plans, and so you can see the arrows going in all different directions. At the core also is the college mission, vision, and values, and once again, students sit there as well. So, you can see the flow of information is going through, but the data that we're sharing tonight is some of the data that's used throughout this, you know, in addition for the ed master plans, there's an external scan that you're gonna, you'll hear about and you'll see in the educational master plans going forward, that also informs our enrollments, you know, what are the trends that are happening in the community? Or is K-12 as robust as it was ten years ago, or is there a decline in K-12 students for, for, and then what do we need to do to address that, if there's a decline or an increase in a certain population or need? Next slide.
All right, today we just wanted to give you a different holistic picture of both FTS, as well as enrollment across the district and the colleges, as well as trying to be able to show you some of that data sliced between different subgroups, so we'll look at ethnicity, gender, age groups, as well as some other student demographics. As Chancellor Jackson said, we created, that's why we created so many different charts, so you can really get a different flavor for each of the student demographics across the district. We won't be going into detail for all those charts, but we, I'll be going over some of the summaries and some of the big takeaways of what that data and what the trends that we've been identifying. Next slide. So, what we've been seeing, especially from the previous year, is, I'm happy to report that we have seen an increase in FTS from the previous year for the district, and that's, we've seen that across the district. So, at Berkeley, at Alameda, at Laney College, we've seen this increase. And merit, it remains steady, so we're happy to see no declines across the district. And next slide. And what I'm happy to show is that you can see just here quickly, we've seen this increases ever since, you know, the previous year, we're having a growth rate of about 5% from the previous year. So, I'm happy to report, I'm hoping that this trend continues, and I'm hoping the success of our fall is free, spring is free, can help lead towards and continue this trend of growth in enrollment. Next slide. So, now we want to just take a look, again, just of overhead count and enrollment across the district. Next slide. And what we've seen here is, again, we've seen an overall increase of 8% across the district. We've seen also increase in enrollment when we look at ethnicity over our largest race and ethnicity groups, increasing African-Americans, Latino students, and our Asian students. We've seen increases across age groups and gender. So, we're happy to report that we are seeing different increases across, and we've only seen slight decreases, for instance, in low-income students, very minimal of eight students. So, we're happy that, for the most part, we're having these increases, and for example, we've seen our largest increase enrollment at Laney Colleges, fifteen hundred more students than we had last year. Next slide. So, again, I don't want to go through all the slides, but I just want to get an example of, example of how showing that our increase in enrollment is, is going up. Next slide.
And I just want to point out, especially for our new board members, when we talk about unduplicated enrollment, that means a student can be taking multiple classes at multiple different institutions, but with unduplicated headcount, we only count them once, because we only have one student, even though they may be taking courses, and that's counting toward enrollment growth, both at Laney and College of Alameda, for example. So, it just gives you an idea of our actual physical number of students. We saw a little bit of a drop, and then you can see, we kind of turned the corner, and now we're starting to see some rise in the number, total number of students, now that we've opened our doors, which we did in 2022.
Thank you Chancellor, and this slide, again, is just an example of our enrollment broken down by race and ethnicity over the past three years, and as I previously mentioned, we are seeing that growth in our largest student populations, the Asian, Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latinx.
And I want to chime in here, because, and I want to chime in here, so we presented the equity plans in March, and one of the things, the areas of focus for all the colleges was African-American or Black students, and also our Latinx populations, right? And you can see, so rebooting of EMOSIA programs, rebooting or new Fuente HSI grants, HSI STEM, and so forth, across all four colleges has really focused on not only access, but you're gonna see later also on retention and also success, but you can definitely see the peak in numbers, even like for our Latinx population, way beyond even our 2020-21 student population.
Yes, thank you. And before I move on to the next section, I don't know if we have any questions around this first part of enrollment? Yes?
Yeah, I did, I just had a question regarding, I guess it was on slide, it was not numbered, but the one where you were discussing low-income students was the only group that actually was, that decreased. I was kind of wondering, like, I guess the first question, is it two-parter? First question is, do you count them based on financial aid, and if so, would fall is free and spring is free have something to do with that, because they're no longer applying for financial aid?
Yes, that's how where they're categorized as low-income.
Right.
I can say that.
So, does that mean that possibly those low-income students are still actually taking classes, they're just not counted, because they're not taking financial aid, because they don't need it? Right?
I, no, one of the things that we have done is, we require students for fall is free to apply for financial aid. So, we don't lose the count of those students, but I, I don't know why. I, I know the cost of living has gone up, so I can't imagine that we have less students that are coming, but that's kind of an anomaly, because when I saw that figure too, I thought, hmm, that is counterintuitive, if we have more students coming, but we have less low-income students, so I don't know if the figures have changed, you know, Dr. Biskov, if you know, or Tina, because the federal government does change what is a threshold for financial aid, and maybe because you can work at one of the fast food places and make $25 an hour, maybe that has some effect on it, that would be the only thing. Because I know we still have a large number of students that are low-income, but the federal government established what those standards are across the board, so that may have an influence.
And so, and this is a number of eight students across the entire district, that's what we're down.
Oh, I thought it was presented.
No, it's eight students, and so, one of the things that has changed, I know, having just come recently from a college, that the colleges have been really focused, this is gonna come up later on, on in-reach for the student populations, we still have a lot of students on our campuses that don't know about financial aid or don't know about Pell, so there's been a lot of in-reach on that. So, we still have a very large population that's low-income, but yeah, we're down eight students, so.
Thank you.
No worries.
Yeah, so we're talking, it's not a very significant number, it's very minimal.
Okay.
I just thought it was interesting to at least put that, just to know.
And did you have a question, Vice President Quinlan?
In the spring of 20, when the pandemic hit, we had a large number of students that left with EWs, because it was chaos.
Yes.
And they were in chaos, we were in chaos, the whole world's in chaos. So, how did, did that impact our enrollment numbers, or are those counted as FWs now, or just Ws, or? I didn't see it in the bottom.
And I'm not sure, Dr. Joker?
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing the question.
So, how were the EWs counted in our enrollment? For during the spring of 2020, and then fall of 21, I think we also carried over the EW.
So, yeah, the EWs are still counted as Ws, they, they...
They don't turn to an F.
No.
No, they don't, no, but they do count against us as far as retention.
Your questions about enrollment, and if it impacted the enrollment numbers?
Or just, so it did impact our retention numbers?
Yes, so we'll see those later on, but not the enrollment numbers, because the counts are census, right? And so, even though you're going the EW all the way, but it's, you're still getting the, the data that we pulled would have been census. Yeah. Okay.
All right, if we can skip to the slide 14. Thanks Sasha, so our next area we want to talk about is student retention and success. Next slide. So, overall, just, we've only seen very, like, minimal changes around student retention and success. Small decreases and small increases around different subgroups of student populations. As you can see, the percentages across are very small. I did want to just indicate certain aspects where we have seen some increases. But again, we're holding very, the takeaway is that, for the most part, we're very stable from the previous year. I think it's just interesting where we have seen a few more increases and slight decreases amongst different age groups. For example, our older students and some more younger students are up compared to, from the previous year. And then slightly increases for all genders. And again, we do see some slight increases for our low-income students, but again, our enrollment is down a little bit for our low-income students, so that's not too much of a surprise. So, next slide. And again, when we look at completion rates from the prior year, again, there is a slight decrease overall across the district, across the student populations. Again, for the most part, we're seeing pretty much stability again across the district, with only some increases and slight, again, decreases across race, ethnicity, both age group and gender. So, it's not, I'm not too concerned with that, I think, I think, you know, as we're gonna start to increase in enrollment, I think, you know, we'll see how these change over time, but for the most part, we are holding steady.
The reason that this slide in particular is something that we wanted to take a look at also is because this is one of the metrics that is used for the funding, the new funding formula of SCIF. They look at retention, so even though our, our numbers may go up, if we aren't retaining those students, it's on the backside where they're saying, yeah, good thing you've got those FTES, so 70% So seventy percent is going of your funding is going towards that. But then the in these other factors that they're looking at as part of the thirty percent, this is one of those. And so we do want to make sure that the students we get aren't just coming in and then. The ones that we have are leaving out the back door. And we have this revolving door and we can never really get beyond that threshold of FTS. If that happens, because as soon as we recruit new students, the ones that we already have are leaving and not being retained.
I just wanted to add, I think it's also really important, we didn't say this at the very beginning, but all the data you're looking at is pandemic data. Right? And so which really has impacted are obviously the entire community, but the students and. You know, retention and success, it ideally is different for this year versus two years ago, right? And the interventions that the colleges um. Have done in returning face to face more so with student services, for instance, and increasing face to face classes. While also holding online and even online support um programs as well. Is sort of still in flux as we move through this and trying to see. What is it that the students want? Where is that sweet spot? You know, where we are really supporting the students and what they are needing for courses, but also support services, the retention is happening. And they're also obtaining their goals, so.
Absolutely. And so, well, like I said, overall, while the increases and decreases um are somewhat minimal, it is important looking at the data. Um, by these uh different metrics, um, at least to help. Uh, so we can target outreach um in different areas and different subgroups. Um, and where to, you know, allocate resources. Um, next slide. Um, this is just overall retention rate and completion rate. Um, like I said, very uh slight changes uh across the past uh previous three years. Um, next slide. And then here uh is just a retention rate by ethnicity. Um, and again, like I said, we we're not seeing um a lots of of changes across the different ethnicities at this time.
And this one, I think, you know, next year, when we come back with data, for instance, I think. That ideally, we're going to see movements within these numbers. Um, given the, you know, we're back more, we're able to focus more on equity and really putting in place. Um, the activities and the outcomes that are stated in the equity plans.
And and also just to follow up, um, one of the things that the I I can't remember, I think it was trustee Ewing said. You know, these are all real good, but you know, you guys bring us different data, so it's hard to track from year to year. So I think we put a lot of effort, we being the collective we, but the we being the individuals to my right. Uh, put in a lot of work to establish this, so it becomes a template. So when we do this next time. You will have the history, it'll be out in board docs, you can always call it up. And compare this and we will start to compare this. Uh, and that's why we try to give you uh data over a three year plan, because that's what the state uses is a rolling three years. So that's why we're showing you back. So this is going to change. Um, as we get further away from twenty twenty, twenty, you know, twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty one. Um, because the demographics are already starting to change a little bit, as you can see. So um, just wanted you to know that you'll see this again, probably in this format again. Um, because we do want you to be able to track this, just like we're tracking it. And then this will be kind of the standard template. Uh, if the feedback is positive on doing the summary first and then doing the detail slides. Okay.
And so before I move on to the next section, I just wanted to open up for questions again. Okay.
We have a question, um, trustee Gonzalez, you went, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for. Putting in the time to put this together. Um, as I'm looking through what you've presented so far and then looking at the slide. Deck moving forward that I reviewed. I had. Couple sort of meta questions. Um, Tina, you referenced, you know, the. Hope you're okay with the. First name, Associate Vice Chairman, sorry, I was going to sell us.
Right.
Uh. You referenced, you know, this is pandemic data. And I'm wondering, first of all, whether. Anything that we're looking at here, you have confidence that it tells us anything. Um, significant. Other than where we are right now, that is. Because the data, because we had such a huge drop off. And now we're in a completely different world. Is it now apples and bananas? Or it's like, no, we can really, we can draw some inferences from this. Snapshot here that help us understand. As an institution, where we are in terms of our program. In terms of our trends. So that's first part of it. And the second part of it is. I'm seeing the reports of the numbers. But I'm really looking for. From a policy level. And a strategic. Kind of uh. From a strategic level. What's our theory? About enrollment trends? What's our theory about retention? And then programmatically, what are we doing? That is, if we see a two percent increase or decrease. Do we have any idea what caused that? Do we have a theory so we could go back and go? Wow, we try, we put this program in place. And what we saw was among Native Americans, we had a twelve percent increase. But among Pacific Islanders, and I'm just making this up, we had a two percent decrease. What did we do here versus here? And so as you move forward in the presentation, if. You can be. Giving us some better understanding from an analytical perspective. Why do we see this? What is our theory of inequity or equity? And then what is our theory of what we're doing programmatically that might impact that? And I know that that's now getting down to the granular level where you're going to look campus camp by campus, program by program. But it seems to me that that's where we're going to find the answers. That the ten thousand foot level just gives us an. A sense of what we're of where we are, but not why we're there. Much less what we can do as a board to support the colleges. To do better. So I'll just, you know, I don't need a specific response except for the question about pandemic versus other pan, you know. And the other is just like along the way, if you can be inserting that, or if we can get to that at the end. Programatically, here's what we're doing and here's why we're doing it next year when we come back here, we can then say, yes, this worked or nah, this isn't working.
So let me try to take a a stab at that, that you're right, it is a meta question with the multiple um scenarios behind it. Um. This is presented to the board. Um, and it also, the colleges also have um privy to this information. Um. We don't always know. What the reason is, what is supposed to happen? Um, and it usually does, but. To different extents depending on the department, um, et cetera. Is that this data is then analyzed during the program review process that we conduct in the fall semester. And that program review process is to get to that granular level and say, wow. Look at this, we went from this number of students or this percentage mix of demographics. Down to their departmental level, we're giving you the college level data. So I can't tell you for each college. What those data points represent, that really comes from the the colleges and the departments. And the faculty in those departments. And so what should be happening, um, and now we have. Another person in ed services that is going to help to ensure that that's happening at the colleges, but to some extent, I know it is. Um, they should take that data disaggregate it, which they can by department. And then looking at the department to say, yeah, we're all doing about the same in terms of the number of students we have or. Wow, Jim. You have just an atrocious retention rate. You start out with thirty five students and by the end of the semester, you got twelve. Everybody else is in the twenties. So what are you doing differently than what we're doing? And maybe we can share some strategies. That's what's supposed to happen. That is, you know, the altruistic goal of program review is to look at to that data. And disaggregate it. It's very difficult to call out your colleague. When everybody knows within the department who is or who is not performing. So it really is kind of up to the dean to lead that discussion, not in a negative way, but just uh, let's just look at our data. And if it is something that jumps out at you, then you should be discussing it with that particular faculty member. Um, and then maybe it's a, you know, professional development, maybe it's. They didn't know that their data was as bad as it was. But that's what that discussion needs to happen, not at the district level, but really at the college and the department level. And then those colleagues work together with the dean, with the vice president of instruction. And in some cases, the vice president of student services, because they also teach classes. To say, you know, what's what's going on here? How come, how come you're so successful, you know, Dr. Bessikoff? And I'm struggling to keep students in my class. Maybe I should go and sit in your class and see what you're doing differently. I can learn from that. We have got to inculcate that kind of. It's not a gotcha. In mentality, but it's a, we got you, but we got you, we got you back, as Mark used to say, instead of we got you, we're going to hit you over the head. It's a, we got your back and we're going to help you. So that we can improve, because if you improve, the numbers go up for everyone. And that's where we are right now. We're right at that stage. We used to do that. Pandemic came along. You know, and we're all trying to regroup. And kind of get back to what is normal, as it were. But I I know we used to do that. I can't think we don't do it at all, but. It makes it a little bit difficult coming out of this three years of of not seeing each other and not. Being with our students and I think that has some influence on it. And I see Dr. Bessikov itching to make a comment, so go ahead, Rudy.
Chancellor Jackson, I will never play poker against you. I'll just, I'll just hand over my wallet if we end up doing that, but um. Just uh you, the points that uh Dr. Jackson makes are absolutely correct in that really the assessment. Of what goes on and the effectiveness of what we're doing begins at the course level with student learning outcomes. And assessing them and what colleges typically do is they have a cycle. During which they assess their outcomes essentially with that three year window to gather data. And make conclusions, but um and a lot of what happens with that. Is that based on that learning that takes place and it is not a gotcha, it's really just by departments, they talk about what they're doing effectively and what they need to do more effectively. And grounded in those responses, which are grounded in data, including disaggregated data. They make resource requests for their programs. So it it's grounded really truly in that assessment of data. But what's also happening is we also assess our services similarly. So for example, something like tutoring gets assessed that way. And then we also have program level assessments that take place as well. But what we're also doing is we're starting to go down the road of the ILO more, which is the institutional learning outcomes of things. Um, you know, something is is um that flies at a higher altitude, such as critical thinking. And what's been great is over the past few years, a lot of the sharing about ILO's assessments and. Kind of having those questions at an institution level is happening as part of professional development. And at Laney College, um, Rebecca Bailey and Heather Sisneros, uh, just in terms of sharing a lot of those efforts with learning assessment and now Felipe Wilson. Really, as faculty have been at the heart of the leadership of that.
So I'll just share then that I I understand that and as a working faculty member, I I understand. That level of detail. As a board member, what I'm looking for is that. Is the tie in between these numbers and then. Our theory of change. And so that as I think from a policy perspective, I'm not just looking at raw outcome numbers. I'm looking at why are we budgeting certain programs? Why are we funding certain budget line items? Why are we spending up or not spending our reserve? In certain years. Et cetera. So, you know, I'm I'm appreciative of getting the data outcomes. And what I'm looking for is. What I know is there, and that is the intelligence. Behind these efforts. Sometimes we hit it correctly, sometimes we miss it. And I think that your job as senior administrators is putting together all that data to generalize it and say. This is why we're seeing no movement in this trend. Or this is why we're seeing movement in this trend. So I think. From a. A workshop perspective, what would be helpful for me is frankly, having more of the VPIS here. Who are doing the college level. Kind of aggregation. Of this kind of data, as well as the academic senate and classified senate presidents. Who really are understanding their constituents and the efforts that their constituents are playing. In these processes, that level of intelligence is happening, but we're not privy to it here. Um, and I think it would be really helpful, informative from a policy perspective to get that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for this information. I uh it's my first time hearing this. Um, so I'm trying to take it in, it wasn't here last year. I'm wondering about. Is um. Piggybacking off Nikki's point. Um, the student climate survey in terms of how it it how it informs what we're seeing on retention. Um, and I just, last meeting, we had students and faculty here talking about. The challenges that they're facing in the classrooms with equipment or with enough faculty. And a lot of frustration from the students and I'm wondering. How the the questions for the student climate survey. Correlate with what we're trying to learn about retention. Uh, because I'm not, when I look at the the climate survey, it doesn't tell me a whole lot about retention. Um, so yes, that's my question.
I think that the climate, so the climate survey is towards the end of this, which um Francisco will cover, but. One of the things that we've used a lot, you know, and Rudy can speak to this too, but focus groups and different surveys on the on the campuses and. I think, having just been on campuses, this is my first time at a district office. Um, my experience is. That we use that data and we do take it in when we're looking at equity and and our equity planning, or when we're looking at our enrollment management. You know, like the modality sort of balance between online versus face to face. We've used the surveys that have, you know, occurred across the district or, you know, focus groups. To then inform how we're doing scheduling, for instance, or how we're doing, you know, or what program has, you know, trustee. Nguyen was asking about like what's effective or what's not. So we, I think that. It's really important keeping the students at the core, right? And so the climate surveys, yes, you're seeing that on a larger scale. But it really does impact the decisions that we as educators on the ground at the colleges are making as well. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I was just going to say too, um, if the board wants to get into those kind of details, then you're right. We need to bring the vice presidents here. We need to bring the faculty here, leadership here. Uh, academic senate, not PFT, because they handle academic and professional manners, not our bargaining units. Um, but the classified. Peralta Classified Senate uh would be the representative body for that, not SEIU. And on the faculty side, it would be the district academic senate. Um, not PFT. Um, different roles that each of them have. And uh PFT and SEIU don't really get into um looking at. Um, what is going to be kept or not, other than their role as being members of that body. But that is not the role of the the PFT nor SEIU, so just want to put that out. Um, for clarification, uh, because sometimes people don't understand the the difference between the two bodies. Um, but if the board, the the college doesn't have any, I mean. The district does not have programs, the district does not have courses. The district has services, but those services are there to support the colleges. So if you want that type of granular detail, then yes, we can bring in the colleges, you can get. You can get that information directly for them of how they use it. But we thought that the board wanted to understand what are major trends, not specific things particular to a certain college, because each college has a different environment. They do things a little bit differently. So, um, so miscommunication, if that is what the board wants us to do, we can do that. Um, but we did what the board had asked us to do from the last time we had the presentation. Okay, um, Cindy and then Louis.
I would say I'm, I'm a little bit less interested in the weeds, but I would like to know. And I keep on looking at the slides and I was also looking at last year's slides too. Going back to what you just said, Dr. Jackson, from, from all of your expertise and your analysis, what are the trends? What are we seeing? And I think at this particular point, we're seeing that we're still not able to understand what's going on. I mean, our, our attendance has gone back to the numbers, I think, two years ago. Um, and so that's there, but is there anything else that we can pull or extract from our data at this? I don't know if it's earlier or late or at this particular point that will allow us to, to figure out how to move forward, what to do, what to expect. Um, because I'm not finding, I'm not finding enough information in these data sets at this point.
So one of the things that, this is kind of part one of, of the discussion, just because you need to be grounded in what the big trends are. Um, at the next meeting, we just finished up, um, and some of you will remember this, the data integrity study that we did but with Deborah Lunsford. Um, she did it at the same time that she did the technology plan. Um, that was, I know because it was April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, and I was on the agenda for, so I was here, uh, Zoom, uh, we were doing Zoom meetings. And one of the things that you will find when she does her study, so each of these is taking a different lens. We're giving you the thirty thousand foot lens, so you can see overall, this is what is happening in the district. Keep that, put it in the back of your head. The next step is to look at what is happening on the colleges. What are the students' experience? What are some of the gaps in the process? And that has to do with the quality of the data that we put into the system. So if garbage in, garbage out. And when she did her first presentation, again, I, I know some of you and VP Quinlan is one of them, likes to go back and look at previous data, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one was the first presentation on data integrity. And the reason that data integrity is important is because that is our funding. We are based on funding, thirty percent of our funding comes from these indicators that we're telling you about today. Retention, success, transfer certificates, thirty percent. So we're telling you, this is at the highest level. I can't tell you why the welding class is over here and everybody else in welding is up here. That's something that the colleges can tell you. I'm just telling you what the trends are. And so those trends that we see is that we're increasing in enrollment. But we're not increasing in full-time students. We're increasing in part-time students, not in full-time students. And a full-time student, if you're taking twelve units, is one FTES, one full-time equivalent students. But to get one FTES, we may need four or five students to get to that, that goal. That's one trend that we're seeing right now. And this disaggregated, the other trend, and correct me if I'm wrong, Francisco or Tina or Stephanie. The other trend that we're seeing is that our students are not being retained. And we don't know why. The colleges have done focus groups, so they can tell you what they found. All I can tell you is what my data is saying, that students are not being retained. Why they're not being retained? I would ask my, my college presidents to provide that information if that's of interest to the board. The other trend that we tend to see is that students of color. And this is varies, the people that are doing focus groups say they like hybrid or they like face-to-face. The people that do the survey online say they tend to like online, because they're using online. So I can give you the data, but I can't make an analysis that all students who are taking face-to-face don't like online. I think that's a bit of a stretch, but we do have students that prefer face-to-face or a hybrid mode, and I believe that's in the data that we're gonna be presenting tonight. Um, that seems to be the consensus. They like a hybrid, they like online. Totally face-to-face, hmm, you know, depending on the college that you ask, you'll get a different answer. If you go to College of Alameda, they have a younger enrollment. Students of the average age is just out of high school, under twenty-one. You go to Merit, they're averaging about twenty-eight to thirty-two. So you have a different viewpoint. So when you ask me about programs, it depends on the demographics of the college, you know, um. Students that are older tend to be self-directed. So they like online, because they can do it, they can fit it in their schedule. Students that are younger, even though they like the technology, they still like the socialization. So that's another trend. So we have to look at the colleges, not the district. Has a look at that mixture, take the data that we're telling them and showing them based upon how students are enrolling in classes. They need to look at wait lists to see when we offer classes, who is waiting to get into a class and be responsive to that. That's not the district, that is the colleges. And so it's, it's um, a little difficult to give you an overview of all of that unless you want to spend a six-hour day with us going into that kind of detail, which we can do, if you want us to do that, we can do that. But we thought we'd give it to you in chunks, not just, you know, trying to drink water from a fire hose. Sure. And then Louis's question.
I think to add though to your question, also to Nikki's question as well. We're looking at pandemic data, so using pandemic data as predictive analysis doesn't fully make sense, right? Like, I feel like, you know, so we're looking at twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two data. Ideally, potentially this year is our year where we can start going, okay, this is our new baseline. Uh, I don't know that that's real, right? And so if that's the case, then we can start taking this and going forward and eventually being able to get to where we can do predictive analytics. I feel like using the pandemic isn't a solid space to be in to then go, okay, that means we're gonna go in this direction, you know, um. So yeah, so that's for both of your questions, I guess. I think that's where that is, unfortunately. Louis?
So um, a couple of things following up on what Nikki said. For me, what I'm looking, I'm looking at our, at our budget as an investment. You know, we're investing in our colleges, in our classes, in our faculty, in our facilities, in an area where we think the community and our students are gonna benefit the most. Where we're gonna show growth, where we're gonna, some of them are necessary investments, whether we get growth or productivity out of them, or, you know, nursing program, we're never gonna show productivity for, despite its very design. Some of our CTE programs are the same way. But our information should be able to give us what we need to make the investments in our colleges, either to improve or to grow the things faster that we know we see are growing. The, the second thing is, um, um, I forgot.
I would say, I, I think what the state is doing is philosophically different than what you're saying. It isn't up to the board to make that decision. It's up to the colleges. And that's why the student funding formula is saying, hey, district office, it's not your decision to determine what the colleges should do. The money should be at the colleges. And the colleges, based upon the data that you're providing them, like we're doing right now, you should be able to make that assessment with your faculty, with your staff and with your student voices. We have no students at the district office. So we listen and we can say, this is what you should get based upon the SCIF model and based upon your performance. But we're giving you the dollars. How you decide to spend those dollars is really up to the college, as long as it follows within that first slide that we talked about where we had the graphics. As long as you look at the mission, as long as you look at the board's strategic goals, as long as you look at what your goals are. And putting all of those in, looking at the environmental scan, where they're telling you there's gonna be growth in this particular sector or there isn't, then the college kind of makes those decisions. It isn't up to the board to make that.
But the district makes the decision on how much allocation goes to each college.
We have a model that we use. Yeah. So I don't decide, the model tells me how to do it. I don't say, oh, you're gonna get this much this year, Rudy, but next year you're only gonna get this much. The model tells us what to do, because it's based on the three-year average of data. Even if that data is.
Right now, we're using the pandemic as that part of that average.
So is the state, yes.
But the state isn't, the state is funding this fully if we were back in nineteen.
They're not gonna do that. They're not gonna do that in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-five, fall of twenty twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. It goes away. It goes away then, um, the whole harmless goes away. And that's where we are aiming to be with our budget. When you get the budget presentation, um, which is coming up, I think in the next couple of months. And we also have a presentation on the SCIF, so that you can understand that. That's why I said we're doing it in bite-sized chunks. Um, so that you can kind of put all of this together. So by the time the budget comes around, you can understand why we have what we have. But most of it, most of our budget is in personnel.
What degree do we?
Oh, sorry, I was trustee with Ron, then um, trustee Kevin, how's his hand up on Zoom?
Okay.
Go ahead, trustee with Ron.
To what degree do we, uh, college level or wherever, look at skillsets? As opposed to higher up the abstraction ladder, the uh, career awareness and talking about careers and, and certified in that, which for the internet, uh, across the board throughout the United States and the community colleges, we're way behind the power curve. But where do we talk about skillsets in terms of what is the, the employment community? What are they looking for in terms of skillsets? Rather than, um, up the abstract and better, for example, uh, one of the, the world is changing dramatically. And it goes through cycles and we're going through a cycle right now where it's dramatically changing. And um, a couple of things come out of that. One is cyber, the cybersecurity issue is huge. I mean, we don't have to go too far, but to look at what's happening with our top secret intelligence that leaked out in the Pentagon, that's causing a lot more trouble than what the, the average citizen understands.
I, but uh, one of the things that we, we talked about when we first presented the enrollment academy uh, was the, so what, so what are we gonna do? And I, I told the board, there's um, a strategy that we discussed at the highest levels within the district, and we also brought in the career and technical deans to talk about that. Was how can we collaborate more to give the business community what they want? Because it's on the career and technical side, it's not on the transfer side. And I said, one of the things that we have to do is to leverage those resources better. Um, and that means we need to collaborate closer on those additional funds, because not only would it help us and our students, it would also leverage the resources that we need to make up the difference in some of our structural deficits. So you're on track with that, Bill. Um, I know that trustee Quinlan is planning on going to a CTE conference. Maybe he can bring some new information back that we're not aware of. But the CTE programs at each of the colleges have an advisory group that, in, industry advisory groups that help them with the curriculum, that tell them what the trends are, uh, advise them on what employers are looking for, and they modify their curriculum to align with what that is. That is, we've been doing that since Perkins friends were here. I won't say before I was born, but probably at least around nineteen ninety, we've been doing that. So we continue to do that. Um, but one of the things that we've talked about doing, and I really would like to see it in the fall, is we used to have district-wide discussions by discipline. And it were discipline clusters, because we didn't have, you know, eight or nine psychologists teaching. But we did it like in the social sciences, so sociology, uh, MNI justice was a little bit different, but we tried to do those clusters, English cluster, ESOL cluster, you know, math cluster, so that they could share what they were doing across the district. And we haven't done that. We haven't done that in a while. We used to do that routinely. So that's one of the things that we want to talk about doing is how do we collapse some of those barriers between the campuses, so that we're working across the campus to do some of the best things and to provide the, the internships. Uh, we have LAEP funds that the state is giving us, all four colleges apply for it. And that is exactly what it's for. It's to bridge the gap between what you're getting in the classroom and what you get in the outside world with internships, paid internships for us to do that. So we're already starting on that. Like I said, I didn't know you wanted us to provide those kinds of information. We can do that. Um, but that really is, I'd like the colleges to speak to that. I can speak to it, because I know what's going on, but I really think when you hear it from them. Um, because some colleges are taking a different tack than others on how they're approaching that.
Well, the reason I bring that up is that you mentioned that all of this should be taken care of at the college level and not with the district level, with the board. And um, you know, I understand that we're not gonna suck everything down, Dr. Hyatt, that was abstraction ladder to uh, determine uh, what the colleges are gonna do. But um, we have, again, uh, you mentioned Merit College having an average age and twenty-seven-year age group or whatever. Um, there's a lot of students, uh, potential students out there that um, that use skillsets. They may have a master's degree in something. But if they can't communicate, they don't have the communication skills, learn how to communicate to people that don't understand what uh, the scientific area that you're working in. Uh, all the way down to a mechanic, for crying out loud, they can't describe to me why my twenty-three computers in my car don't go into sync. No, but I mean, it, it's um, I went with the Chamber of Commerce and the governing board of the Chamber of Commerce to try and figure that out and, and what are the skillsets that they're looking for? And um, in a lot of cases, they'll have a, an employee that has a master's degree. And uh, they need to have skillsets and they're sending them back to community colleges.
We, we are seeing a lot of that. We're seeing people come back to the colleges that have bachelor's degrees and sometimes master's degrees. Um, either they had an epiphany and they want to do something different, or they know that they have a weakness in writing. Um, we're right now looking at starting a restarting, we used to have it, a pre-academy with the police and law enforcement. Because of, one of the things that they told us, um, when we gave the board the uh, the presentation uh, last week, is that they have individuals who may pass the physical component of the law enforcement, but they can't write.
Right.
They, and you have to write reports when you're a police officer or law enforcement. So we're starting that and that tends to be those basic skills. It, it really hasn't changed. When you say what is the employer want, there's critical thinking skills. They want those skills, those basic skills, reading, writing, arithmetic. I mean, those things have been there. They haven't really changed.
We have one example of going back a few years, but where there was a Well, we have one example of going back a few years with, where uh, there was a uh student at merit that had a doctorate. In electrical engineering. And so we interviewed him. Love to have you here. Why are you here? You have a doctorate and you're gonna, because, because he's basically stated. The skill sets that I need for day-to-day operations weren't taught. At Berkeley, that Berkeley was theoretical, I need practical. That's the skill set I'm talking about, I mean, practical things. There's a lot of people out there that we're not subscribing to. Uh, another example is a young lady was a teller in a bank that I, bank that I retired from. And um, she was a single mother and um, very good, very standing, whatever. Uh, in terms of the skill sets of a teller. Uh, the bank sent her to community college, got her a degree. She's now at the management level. Substantially higher than she ever could have achieved because she learned the skill sets. When she was there, she could see what she didn't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Was getting me back.
Absolutely.
And um.
I, we know those things. We know, we see those success stories. It's just how do we leverage it to the next level?
Right.
I think that's the, that's where we are right now is how do we, we know that, we, we see the data. We hear the students' voices, but how do we create the mechanisms? That are structurally sound, that can be sustainable and that don't require us to spend a ton of money. And then when the money goes away, the structures go away. So we, we do need to talk about that and I, I'm working on some proposals to bring to the board during the retreat. Um, I ask for you to keep an open mind um, as we talk about that because they may be a little bit outside the box. But I really think this is a time for us to, to step outside the box because we cannot continue to sustain. I think the level of um. Support and resources we have by every year, cutting our deficit. On the backs of vacant positions. And that's what we're doing right now. You're gonna get to the point where you can no longer do that. We've been able to get through it because of the pandemic. I hate to say that, but it's true. The money that came from the feds, the money that came from the state has allowed us to buffer. But we are gonna have to face reality and you will see that when we present the budget. And it all ties into what you're looking and hearing right now is that our funding base is not going up double digits. We were thirty-five percent below what we were at the pandemic and we were on a decline even then. We've been able to make up eleven percent. But before SCIF comes into place, we've got to make up that thirty-five percent and then some. And, and I think that might be a little doing the same thing that we're doing, excuse me, doing the same thing that we're doing. I don't know if we're gonna be able to attain that. So we're gonna have to look at some different, some different structures. Um, and like I said, this is a start to get, kind of get you, okay. Terminology, trends, this isn't the end-all, um. Trustee Ewing, um, and trustee Delphi Poke.
Appreciated the exchange.
Oh, Shereen has her hand up too.
Okay, I'll go ahead and go after Nikki and then Shewit can go after. Thank you.
I've really appreciated the exchange. Um, and I tried to do this last meeting as well.
Nikki, sorry Nikki, do you mind? We didn't realize that she we'd actually had a question before you. I'm so sorry. Do you mind? If we have her, it's hard to navigate both individuals, sorry. And Louis, if you could.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Johannes.
Um, uh, it's, this is more so regarding the data and um. Pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, all the things. And I just want to speak as far as to clarify for the trustees, because I know there are a lot of questions. And as someone who works at a college as an administrator daily, and as someone who's a professor of analytics weekly, I guess. I can sort of shed a little bit more light first. There's no such thing um, as going back to prior to the pandemic. Nobody's even thinking in that manner whatsoever. It's more so post-pandemic only. Um, and. For example, post-pandemic has been twenty-twenty-one, we were supposed to open, but there's a new strain, therefore we must shut down. So data is gonna be weird. Twenty-twenty-two, slow open based on what happened twenty-twenty-one. Data's gonna be a little bit strange again. Twenty-twenty-three, let's see what happens. Hopefully we can reopen fully, but we do with Pearl Ted, it's not with my college. We do have fall is free, spring is free. So again, data's a little bit funny. So we're not gonna be able to have a baseline for quite some time. Meaning this data, as far as analytics is concerned, you have three levels. You have descriptive analytics, predictive, and then uh, prescriptive. So we are describing what's happening right now. This is purely what's going on, but the issue is what's going on is constantly changing. Which means we're gonna stay in the descriptive state for quite some time because we're gonna have to continue to have multiple questions after we see what is happening. We'll say, well, why is that? Okay, that's another question for descriptive. So we're gonna be in the state for quite some time. Then we get to predictive. Hoping that the predictive, predictive models are correct from that, which is gonna be quite some time again. Then we prescribe the remedy, what's, what have you. And that's the college level, that's us, that is the district, all the things. And that's gonna be way far in advance. We're gonna continue to see descriptive for quite some time. And I think that's where everyone is a little bit unsure of or unclear of or what have you. But right now, we're purely just trying to understand what's going on. We cannot give you the whys. All that will do is. There, there are whys, but right now we're gonna have to continue to ask further questions based on what this information that we're receiving right now is. Is that?
Thank you, trustee Johannes.
Just back to me.
Yes, go ahead, Nikki.
All right, thank you. Um, I've really appreciated the discussion and in part because I think what. We're trying to do is get to that um curious state. That, that we're in this together uh approach. And I think to the extent that we keep in that world, it works. Um. Frankly, I think we do need to look pre-pandemic. We, we had a, we had a ten-year-plus decline. Anybody who's been here has seen. And yet I think we've never really had a good theory of why that decline has happened. We've got, we've got a lot of ideas, but we've not said, you know, here are our top three or five factors that we're gonna try to impact. And Chancellor, you're saying that when we hit. The end of the, you know, when we hit the fiscal cliff, we're gonna have to make some organizational changes. I think you're right, but we better have a good theory of why we're doing that and what we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm suggesting, not that we get into the weeds. But that the, you know, the weeds, the, the program level, the institutional level, the uh course level. Analysis that Rudy was talking about, it informs our, our meta-theory. And that's where I think the VPIs and so forth can be really helpful in filling that out. As trustee Withrow likes to say often, it, you know, brings it to life and helps you understand uh, the broad theory. What I'm not seeing in the data pretty consistently is that broad theory. And Chancellor, I don't mean this in a critical way at all. So if I say, you know, I think it would be helpful for the board to have that level of. Kind of insight and analysis, I think it just means that I want a richer dialogue. That is in fact a meta-analysis. I don't want to get into the weeds and have the weeds be the primary driver of the conversation. But I do want a better theory of what we're doing. And to this day, I don't know what we're prioritizing. If we say we're addressing equity and we have an equity plan. Okay, what are the top three things that you would bring forward out of that equity plan? If you think the equity is like. A principal driver of retention and enrollment. Okay, let's say that's one of the principal drivers. What's our top theory of what we're doing? Now, if we come back in a year and we haven't seen changes in the equity data. Then we can say, well, we had a theory, might be true, but we haven't proven it. If we don't change something, we're gonna continue on that ten-year decline into the next twenty years. And so from a board level, from a policy level, that's not acceptable to me and I don't think that's acceptable to anyone. That's what I'm asking for here, not Cindy getting into the weeds. I'm, I'm just asking for a higher level of analysis that, that helps us inform what we're doing. Um, to understand when you bring us a budget, why is that budget looking this way? How did we get there? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ewing, but I wasn't saying that we need to wait till we get to the cliff. What I said is we need to start planning now, knowing that there is a cliff ahead of us.
And then I went, the theories behind that plan, that's, that's what I'm asking for.
And, and that's what we're trying to give you, the building blocks for you to be able to see that. And, and maybe the part that is missing um, is even though we call it the weeds. Um, I think maybe you need to hear it from the colleges. Um, and also it is encapsulated in their educational master plans. Um, that they've been working on for almost eighteen months now. So you haven't seen those, we, we presented kind of a status of it. Um, but they will be making a presentation, um, each college will be making a presentation on theirs. Because you as board members need to take what the colleges are putting in their plan and say, hmm. We endorse that, we think that that's good and we should include that in our master plan or our strategic plan. And then when you do that, that helps to determine how you spend your money. So when you say, how do we know to put it in this project or that project? You have to have your building blocks in place first and we haven't had a master plan. Um, our last one ended, I believe in what, twenty-eighteen? So, you know, we haven't had a, we haven't had a master plan to say, these are the things that we feel. Faculty, staff, students, administration. Environmental scan, looking at the horizon to see what, you know, is out there. And taking all of that and putting it together in a cogent plan, we haven't done that yet. So it's hard to give you the answers when we don't have the research behind it. Because we don't know where the colleges are coming from. That's coming. That's why I said these are building blocks. It's, this isn't a. End-all, be-all, give you the answers. This is to give you, as we're moving through the process, we're bringing the board along with us. Rather than having it all in a nice bow and saying, here, here it is. And you're like, well, how did you get there? So we're doing this, we're doing this now.
Fair enough, Chancellor. And I think the other part of it that I'm asking for then is as we watch how the stew is being made.
Mm-hmm.
See which are the, who are the cooks that are around the pot? And so, for example, I think that if we have the VPIs and the shared governance leaders. They are our best source of data. So that as we're talking about how the stew is being made, why did we add a lot of chili, for example? Well, because our classified leaders said, this is a, a major roadblock for student enrollment. And so we, we did something there. Um, having them here to help the board understand. That level of policymaking would be, for me, extremely informative. I think classified employees are among our best sources of data.
Yeah, they are.
So, and, and you would know that, you came out of the classified ranks.
Absolutely. And, and they are some of our best because they're very candid.
Yeah.
About what goes on.
And just as a practical matter, like right here, I see Donald Moore as a panelist. He's not a participant. He should be a participant in the room here, raising his hand, having the comments, et cetera, along with Dr. Dropper. And Dr. Shears, et, et cetera. So I'll, I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Um, one of the things that I think I keep asking when I, when I was reviewing the slides last night is the why. And that, to your point, Nikki, we have to think about the decline in enrollment that happened before the pandemic, right? And so my context only goes from November twenty-twenty up until now because that's when I got elected. And so I think maybe in, you know, con- con- continuing to try to answer the why, why is it? Why is our enrollment declining the way it is? I'm, I'm looking at it just from the perspective of someone who has a background in policy analysis. We need to be able to identify the problem before we can move forward with a solution together. And I agree to your point, Nikki, about having um, a variety of people involved with that. I think that that's really helpful. And I think because we have so many new trustees, I think that would also be helpful in providing that context for all of us. To be able to work together, collaborate to move forward. So I just kind of wanted to flag that because I, I still am not, you know, and it's not to any, it's not to criticize anybody. It's just, I know that that's a really difficult question to answer. But I think until we are able to answer that question, we're not gonna be able to move forward in a way that would increase our enrollment in the timeline that we have. So I'll stop there for now. Um, I know trustee Reese had a question as well. If she's.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, okay. First of all, I just want to really appreciate what she we'd said because I think that. That in a wonderful succinct nutshell was a perfect way to kind of think about what we're doing. Which is, we don't really know what we're doing nationally, globally, probably in terms of data, statistics and predictive. Um, analysis and so on and so forth. So I think back to what Dr. Jackson was saying, which is, I believe the question. That um, you keep asking Nikki, which I think you actually responded to, which is, what can we take away as much as we can with this data? From what we are looking at. And you said three things that are, are, are pretty, pretty accurate. And that is, one, that part-time students, we have sixty percent or fifty-nine, fifty-seven percent part-time students. And thirty-seven percent um, full-time. And then I looked at the data mart statewide statistics and it's sixty percent part-time, forty percent full-time. So that is a trend and that is statewide. And I'm sure that if we even took it a step further nationally. We'd probably find something similar in terms of the community colleges. That's important data. The second thing that also we all have talked about, so it's very clear, is that. Our enrollment has declined an incredible amount. And if we look at the state, the state had two-point-four, two-point-three million students. And they are now at one-point-four. So I think those two data points are really important because it's telling us, number one. These students are not here and they may not be coming back. But what we need to do is we need to figure out what we're gonna do in this in-between stage because we can't keep on waiting. Because those students are not gonna be coming back, at least in the next two or three years. So there's a part of exactly what she was saying, which is we can't really predict, but there are certain things that we know. And what we know is that we don't have those students anymore, period. And that also the trajectory of a majority of our students are now our time. That's a reality statewide. And so we have to, I, I feel like there's a, and. We're going to have these conversations. I think what we're looking for. If we brought, and yes, we're gonna have conversations with our VPIs, our presidents, our academic senators, all of those individuals for sure. But those two things. Are, are, are kind of facts. Those are the two data points that we can hold on to. So regardless of what happens in those conversations, we know enrollment is nowhere near where it has been. So we have to deal with that reality. What are we gonna do as a result of that? Because we can't wish that, no matter how much marketing we do. And the other is really kind of, if most of our students are part-time, how do we do something innovative? How do we do something at the policy level that helps an innovation um, come to fruition? That targets that pathway maybe. And there was an ASC triple-C resolution, I think that was just, or that is being put forth at the plenary. Which is, can we start considering pathways for part-time students? And I didn't realize until listening to you all today and looking at the data at the state level, that that's, that's something that's pretty serious. That we really have to start thinking about because the full-time pathways are not going to respond to our students' current needs.
Thank you, trustee Reese. Um, I want to go ahead and let the presenters um, continue on with the presentation. So let's go ahead and save questions until the, um, until the next few slides are, are finished.
So I just want to address what you just said, actually, before we start, sorry. So as part of the, we just changed desk to the education committee. It'll start with its new title next year as part of the PBIM. But as part of a sub of that is gonna be as. But as part of a sub of that is gonna be as district-wide strategic enrollment management committee. The colleges have their own and their own plans and so forth. But one of the things that we've already talked about is bringing about the discipline meetings, right? But I think it's, it is really critical that we look at this and we have discussions and that's where, that's where faculty are present, classified present. And administrators, right? Cause it's part of our governance. Um, you know, what does it look like to package? I don't know, a district-wide evening weekend college, say, or something like completely. That we haven't talked about before, like how do we do that? How do we compete? You know, like I always say, I'm very relational and highly competitive. That's our colleges too, right? And because we need to work together across the disciplines, we need to have the discipline meetings, but we also need to figure out how do we shake things up. And so I think that's partly, I think Nick, what I'm hearing out of Nikki too, like that's what you're wanting. And I hear you saying that too, but we, I think that we have that energy as well. It's just where does that happen? I think that can be one space that we can start having that dialogue in a different way. And ideally moving forward. And yeah, it needs to happen yesterday versus, I mean, that's the hard piece too. Like in a governance structure that we have, it's fabulous and it makes us slower. So we don't pivot, right, as fast. So I don't know, but those, I think, like looking at those kinds of things. Um, how do we package and how do we sell it? Um, given we know, like you're gonna see in the ed master plans, you're gonna see the demographics and who's, who's out there in the community. And there are companies out there, I know a couple of folks are using where they do predictive analysis within. And some, they can tell you within your, it's using census data within your um zip codes. Who's likely to come to college within the next two years? And some of the colleges across the state are using this, and we have this here as well. Um, but how do we target if we want, if it's an equity issue? If we need to increase access, how do we target a certain population potentially, which you can easily see in that data? How do we then go after, you know, and package things if we know it's working adults or what have you that we need? What does that look like? You know, so I, I think there's a lot. Um, yeah, and it's not an easy, nor is it a quick fix that we need to have.
And, and one last thing to get back to your question, Bill. Uh, the competition, there's, there was a lot of discussion at A, ACC, the National Conference. In that we have entities like Google. And that are creating their own colleges. They're saying, we're not gonna wait for you. We're gonna just start our own colleges and we're gonna start right at a high school. We're gonna give them the perks. We're gonna start them. At, you know, sixty thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars, depending on where they go and they can only go up from there. We're gonna house them, we're gonna feed them, we're gonna do all those things for them. So community colleges, um, you're like old school. So that is another, when you said, what are the skill sets that they're needing? They're saying, you guys aren't giving in to us fast enough and as much quantity as we need. So we're gonna start our own schools, you know, and the students like that. They do high school in the morning and the afternoon, they do what Google wants them to do, working on different projects. So we aren't that, we can't pivot as quickly as that. But we're trying to get ahead of the game, uh, like Wayne Gresky said, we wanna know where the puck is going. So we can position ourselves there. We don't wanna be following it, cause we'll never catch up. And so that's what I'm trying to get us to that point of making that decision and building that. Knowing that there's a cliff coming up in twenty-four, twenty-five. And we can't wait till twenty-four to come up with an answer and we're in twenty-three right now.
Thank you, Chancellor. Let's go ahead and turn it back over to Dr. Vasconcellos and Dr. Rara. And thank you all for the discussion. This was really helpful.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Um, I think we've had a, a great discussion around the enrollment data. Um, I would suggest or propose in the interest of time, if we move to the uh climate survey, uh, just to kind of hear that student perspective. Around um what we've been discussing. Um, so Sasha, could you move um to slide forty-nine? And this is about a survey we did in fall of twenty twenty-two. Uh, so uh, next slide. Uh, so, uh, yes, so we uh did a climate survey um last fall, early spring. Um, this was on, to get kind of the student perspective. On the return, uh, we covered topics such as courses, instruction. Um, what student services students are utilizing, what resources they find helpful. Um, we really kind of just wanted to understand them as, as they're returning back. Um, I wanna say the survey was offered both online and in person. We had physical copies of the surveys that students could complete at each of the welcome centers at each of the colleges. Um, although in primarily uh students, we found um took the survey online. Um, next slide. Um, a totally, we had uh about two thousand participants, which is around, around nine percent of the total student population. So there is that caveat um in terms of uh gender breakdown. Uh, uh, women were overrepresented compared to our male students. Um, and in terms of ethnicity breakdown, um, we had good representation uh between um our ethnicities. Um, although for um African-Americans were slightly underrepresented compared to the total student population. Uh, for the survey. Um, next slide. Um, in terms of the students who responded to the survey, uh, the vast majority, over half were part-time students. Um, thirty-nine percent were full-time. Um, and in terms of where the students' home campus was. Uh, most of the, uh, we had good, more or less sort of steady representation uh across the colleges. Um, obviously with Laney uh being the highest of respondents, which makes sense as they have the large higher enrollment. Uh, between the, in the district. Uh, next slide. And in uh terms of respondents of, of what they're enrolled by in terms of modes of instruction. Uh, we found most of the students who took the survey um were enrolled entirely online compared to uh. You know, only twenty-five percent of students in person, which sort of follows um the, the trend that we've seen from previous surveys. Um, next slide. Um, so again, with the caveat that, you know, around nine percent of our total students took the survey. Uh, we are pleased to see that for the most part, um, respondents, uh, students were very positive. Um, in their responses. Uh, for example, we asked students. Um, if they knew about which courses they needed to complete to reach their educational goals. And you can see uh almost roughly ninety percent of students found that that was true. Um, and most of the students also um said they were able to enroll in the courses that they want to, to reach their educational goals. Um, next slide. Um, so overall, um, again, I like, um, over eighty percent. Uh, were very positive about Peralta, saying they felt the atmosphere of the colleges to be warm and inviting. Um, they felt that students were being treated, treated fairly. Um, they felt that they are being well-prepared for future education and employment. And they were likely to recommend um the college to a friend or family. Um, next slide. Um, also, um, we asked about other types of student services. Um, again, the vast majority of students felt that um libraries um had. Um, adequate selection of resource materials for their needs. And students um recommended for their peers to take advantage of academic counseling, mental health services. Financial aid tutoring and uh food banks. Um, also, students mentioned um EOPS, Imoja, job placement and AC transit passes. As um valuable um services provided by the district. Uh, next slide. Um, we also asked students to kind of rank the student services that they're, they use most often. Um, and obviously number one was admissions and records, uh, followed by academic counseling, financial aid. Um, student accessibility services. Um, one interesting uh note of Berkeley City and at Merritt, they use tutoring more than food pantry. Uh, the inverse was true for Alameda and at Laney where they use food pantry more than tutoring services. Uh, for the students responding to our survey. Um, less commonly used services were mental health, student business office and student health center. Uh, next slide. Um, but pop, you know, again, we got very positive results from the students. Uh, when we asked them about whether they knew if they qualified for financial aid. Across all the colleges, uh, students responded to a very high degree that they were. Um, did have good knowledge around financial aid and they knew how to apply for financially. Um, next slide. Um, one of the, um, also, um, one of the things we found um from the students um is that. Um, while they mentioned that the food pantry was a very um useful resource. We found that around thirty percent of participants at each college, uh, did not know what a food pantry was. So um, I think that's really uh something we can kind of focus on and make sure that we're publicizing. Um, what, where the food pantry is on their campus, what it entails, um, what it provides. Um, because students are making use of it. They are indicating that it's, they enjoy having that feature. And so I think we just need to uh have a little bit more outreach on what that food pantry is for students. Um, next slide. Um, again, some of the things we found around student services. Um, again, the majority of our respondents found that it was um easy to navigate. Around um our colleges, registration was very easy and that mission staff was very helpful. Um, now this is to say that, um, I know we've have had, you know, some people have had difficulty. We've taught, we've heard comments about their difficulty with um, with sort of navigating registration or applications and applying. But um, and those we are addressing uh for the majority of students that uh we surveyed. Um, they found that um not to be as challenging as well. Um, next slide. Uh, we also asked students about how helpful. Um, they have a clear understanding of how to complete their degree certificates or to transfer. And again, we found overall students um either agreed or strongly agreed. Um, that colleges have been very helpful in helping them uh be able to complete their degrees or to transfer. Um, next slide. Um, colleges, um, the students have also found that for the most part. Um, they interest that colleges were informing them about their academic progress. But here we're starting to see in the data more, more instances of students saying that, you know, they disagree. Or somewhat disagree around, you know, colleges being able to provide um that sort of their progress. And so I think that's something where we might wanna consider again more outreach. I know um we are making um, you know, strides in that. And um in order to better inform students about their current academic progress. Uh, next slide. Um, one of the other uh findings we wanted to, we asked students about is how much are they studying um outside of class? And, and for how long? And for the majority of the students, um, you can see they were reporting more than two hours outside of class. Um, again, this is only represents around nine to ten percent of the student population. And we do know that a lot of times students overestimate their amount of studying time. But it is good to hear that uh they are putting uh hours, you know, considerable hours outside of the classroom. Um, I think also what we found very interesting is when we asked students um where they're studying outside of class. Uh, that number one, the highest response we got was I'm at home. Um, compared to campus library, which is only eleven percent, the same as a coffee shop or city library. Um, and we also, when we ask students about other places where they study. Um, out of a hundred students who said some other place, half of those students said they study at work. Uh, during lunch breaks or whenever they have free time at work. So um. That was something we found really interesting. And so we wanted, that kind of led us to thinking and asking, we wanted to follow that up to ask students. You know, okay, where, you know, is campus or the colleges providing uh spaces for students um to be able to study? Um, next slide. And when we asked that, um, students responded overwhelmingly, actually very positive. Saying that, um, you know, over eighty percent said that their, each college um did have adequate study space on campus. But um when we asked them to indicate, you know, what could help them focus more on their studies. Um, you can see they ranked it. Um, most students wanted uh more safe and spacious indoor space. As well as outdoor study space. Um, they would like um to provide more food options on campus. Um, as well as they like the idea of having transportation to campus childcare. Um, technology and extended um campus library hours. Um, next slide. Um, so to give just some of the respondents a flavor of what students were saying with regards to space on campus. Um, you can see here, uh, students asked about having more quiet spaces. Um, basic with rooms, with whiteboards, for example, for study groups. Um, having individual desk space in a quiet environment, um, as well as for outdoor space. Um, having much more um green or space, spaces with shade, um, because there's lack of seating area. Um, and just more of a feeling also as well as um. Including more uh wifi, increased wifi, which I believe I know we are addressing as well. Uh, next slide. Um, regarding sort of the food options, um, uh, students made comments around, you know, if we could have improvement around vending machines. Um, uh, just easier access to food on campus. Um, especially around the cafeteria. I think students ask for extended hours. Um, especially, I think that's important for our students, as they mentioned, taking evening classes. Um, and if the campus cafeteria is closed, um, that, you know, restricts their options uh for having food on campus. Uh, next slide. And then around technology, uh, students mentioned having more stronger wifi, hotspots. Um, as well as in terms of having additional laptops that they could loan. Um, als- alternative to Chromebooks. And then they also mentioned that the, having a, wanting to have a better understanding of how to use the tech on campuses. Um, so that might be another a resource where, you know, we might wanna provide some more uh training to students about. What technology is offered on campus and opportunities for them, how to use and learn about that technology. Uh, next slide. Um, we also um were interested about, uh, you know, we know that students swirl a lot around our campuses. And so, um, as you can see from our results here, um, the vast majority, over half of our students uh do swirl. And so we kind of wanted to know what are the reasons why they, they are swirling and attending multiple. Uh, colleges and number one is just the viability of time of that class, so to fit their schedule better. Um, perhaps courses are not offered um at one of the colleges. Um, they're perhaps their preferred location, um, a course was offered at one college, uh, but they preferred the type of instruction. Um, therefore the same class might be offered online at one college, but in person at another. Or wanting to take a class with a specific instructor. So those were kind of the top ten re, uh, five reasons. Why uh students mentioned that. Um, and then to get um next slide, we also wanted to ask students. Um, if they attended multiple colleges outside of the Peralta District. And so, um, we had our about a hundred seventeen of our respondents mentioned that they did. And again, we asked them to rank um what colleges they go to. Um, as you can see here, Diablo Valley was um. This college students most frequently attended outside of Peralta, followed by City College of San Francisco, Contra Costa, Chabot. And actually uh CSU East Bay. Uh, next slide. And we wanted to, um. Uh, but overall, um, I think students uh responded that they enjoy uh Peralta, they would recommend Peralta. And um, but what they, I think where we want to target. Is um having colleges better inform students about their academic progress. Um, encouraging students and having to the, making them aware of the campus food pantries. And then students also mentioned um allowing their, you know, recommending their peers to take advantage of academic counseling. The mental health and student health centers, financial aid tutoring and the food bank. Uh, next slide. So, um, and again, as we've heard for students, I think really focusing on study space, outdoor space. Um, would be really helpful along with um all of these. Um, as we've mentioned, um, the other options that students mentioned. So I think. That's kind of at least it gives us some direction and student feedback of what we're hearing uh that students would like to see. Um, next slide. And that's it. Yes.
So the first question is around a nine percent response rate.
Yeah.
Is that a big enough sample to get what we feel are accurate results?
Traditionally, we'd like to have double that. We'd like to have around twenty to twenty-five percent, at least to start making generalizations. That's why I think going forward, we, I, the district IR research, we'd like to collaborate more with the colleges. Because I think, you know, we've had the instance where I think students just aren't familiar with district IR. They don't know what the research office is. And we've had, I had students reply back to me wondering if the email or the invitations to take the survey was a scam. And we had to assure them that no, this was real. So I think going forward, in, in order to increase our response rates, we really want to collaborate more with our, with our college research partners so that they can handle more of the administration of the survey, promotion of the survey. And when we, they do focus groups, they can be with staff that they're familiar with in order to encourage that participation instead of for solely the district. So I think those are kind of some of the approaches we're thinking going forward might be more increased on.
So did you send it out through emails?
We did, and we used HubSpot. We worked with Mark and the communications team to help us with that, that dissemination.
So if, if you, I think if you ask most faculty, students respond very poorly or many have never looked at their Peralta email. I mean, you know, when we entered the pandemic and trying to contact students about startup and classes or how we are moving, basically had to go through contacting and buy sale by texting.
Yeah.
So what I would recommend if we're going to try and do a, an office, any type of electronic transmission is to try and go through the instructors' canvas shells where they will have to go. And then the instructors can also plug the survey.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
Thank you for that VP, Cleveland. That actually was going to be one of my questions was the method by which we were trying to contact students because that's a nine percent. We, we always would love to see more. Because I think that this is really helpful feedback for us to start addressing some of the issues that the students are, are telling us. They're saying we want extended library hours, we want extended cafeteria times. And adapting to their needs and what their wants are, it's going to be important for retention. So if there's any other way that we can be as helpful in getting the surveys out there, that's great because this is just such great data. That's all I had to say.
I think trustee Gonzalez, Rita had her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Super interesting. Agree on the response rate. I'm wondering, I thought I heard earlier that there were focus groups also that were taking place at the college level. And I'm wondering how we can gather information from both to really give us a sense of, I'm just trying to back to the why, why people are leaving, why people are leaving right now, you know? And so being able to gather some of that information, I think would be really helpful.
Yes, we are planning on, even at the district research, we are planning on following up this survey with focus groups. So we're in the process right now of recruiting focus groups at each of the colleges. So to follow up on some of the open-ended responses and feedback that we got from the students. So we're hoping to, we're recruiting students who not only, students who took the survey, but also students who did not take the survey to really get their feedback. So we want to make sure we get a diverse pool. So unfortunately, those are ongoing as we speak. We haven't had a chance to analyze that data yet. But happy to present those findings at a later time.
And if I can add, so the, the mechanism we used in part was connecting with student services groups and affinity groups like Emotion, Quente, for instance, and read NEOPS. And so that they were then sending, oops, the, the messages out about the focus groups. So it was different than just a cold call from IR. So it was just a different approach.
I also wonder about, I'm just thinking about what trustee Reese was saying around part-time students. And I just wonder how much of the retention and the enrollment question has to do with outside forces like the economy or, you know, the, the high inflation and the cost of living and what people have to pay to just get by. And I'm just wondering if some of the questions we can get to in the focus group go to some of that. There's only so much we can do, but in terms of like the part-time pathway, I think that gets to, you know, those kinds of questions. What kind of school, schools are we building for? What kind of students is that different than it was five years ago?
Thank you, Chancellor. Actually, just to share something anecdotally at Laney. Certainly, our work and our investment with guided pathways was coupled with a lot of kind of mixed methods research that included not only surveys, but also focus groups. And one of the, just to give a window into it, what we found out was, and I'm, I'm sure all of you had the experience, you show up for orientation, they pass out the catalog. You know, it's four hundred and some pages here. This is your catalog. Learn it. That's your orientation, right? Actually, I'm looking at my fellow former Buffalo over there, and obviously we had the same orientation. But what we did through our focus groups, when we started to ask about the catalog was, we found out students didn't even know the difference, many of them, between the schedule and the catalog. And so it became a question of, you know, how do we take those four hundred pages or so and really make them so students and, and quite frankly, our industry partners can engage them? And what we did was, we said, you know what, let's not do four hundred pages. Let's do eight areas of interest. And around the state, that was called meta majors in the whole guided pathways talk. And now if you go to our homepage at Laney, for example, and, and, and at other colleges, and you look at the work done on guided pathways, what you often see is an entry point that starts with those areas of interest. And rather than telling students, kind of takes that Socratic method and says, are you interested in this? Does this appeal to you? Does your skill set lie here? Then you go from there to some possible, not, not necessarily majors, but careers. In other words, things that you can be doing for work. And then from there, back to trustee Withrow's question earlier, the first thing that is mentioned is if you do this, these are the skills that, or the outcomes at the program level you'll be getting through with. Here's the job market information. And then finally, here are the classes you need to take. In the case of Laney College, we would not have gotten there without those focus groups and without a lot of that research to, to listen to as, you know, a lot of our narratives has been student voices. So certainly the, the power of the focus group is great.
Thank you, Dr. Vostokov. Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
I just wanted, before trustee Ewing, I just want to say the other colleges have done that also. What Rudy is talking about is part of their educational master plan. And not only did they do that, we also had WestEd, which is putting, pulling all of the data together that gave us a template, worked with the colleges, provided the environmental scan, helped to run the charrette. They also have that data. So it is interspersed through all of our master plans. This is just another document and we duplicated it again because we presented it previously. And we wanted to show if there was any changes based upon what we did initially to where it was today. And hopefully, as Tina indicated, as we go forward and our post-pandemic, we'll be able to get to that predictive analysis that Sharit talked about. But we're not, we're really not there yet. But there are other ideas that are out there that have been successful that we want to look at. And like I said, I'm getting some data, gathering that together to present to the board for consideration when we go to our retreat. Any other questions?
Go ahead, Nikki.
Okay, great. Gosh, this was super helpful as a starting point. And I want to just go back to the sample issues that people were raising. I think it would have been really helpful to have a comparison between the respondent base and then the overall student body. So we could see comparatively how representative is this group of respondents? And then, of course, what it's not taking into consideration is people who've disappeared and we're not, we don't know why. And so trying to figure out how do we get those people is actually, I think, kind of more critical. But this is a nice starting place. About midway through the survey report, you switch from percentages to numbers. And I found that very confusing. So I couldn't look and say X percent of people said this. And then I couldn't compare it campus to campus. So for example, if you look at page fifty-five of your slide deck, you know, you've got some data on whether people felt like the atmosphere was warm and inviting, et cetera. And I really would be interested to know whether there was a compare, whether there was a difference across campuses. For example, Berkeley City College, it's widely known that the facility is in better shape. It just is. It's a newer facility. It's one building. It's been maintained as compared with, let's say Laney, which is notorious for having a lot of problems. Was there a difference there? Was there a difference also between online students and on-campus students? I also found that it was just confusing. It was, anyway, I won't go there. The question on study hours, I actually wasn't finding myself very reassured that a significant number of students are spending like a half an hour a, a day. And I don't know whether those are full-time or part-time students. And because that wasn't broken out, so you said, well, how many, you know, like people who are full-time are spending X number of hours versus people who are taking three-unit class. That data wasn't very useful for me. But as a classroom-level instructor, I see in general, students aren't studying very much and their expectation of the amount of time that they're studying is dramatically lower than my expectation. I wanted to see a connection between success and then those responses. Also would have, and this is, you know, it's like, how do you tie apples and oranges together? You've got some questions about food pantry, but we don't, and then a little tiny bit on transportation. But if we look at time, study, study, location, and then housing, security and transportation, my guess is there's a big correlation between the amount of time people have to, you know, commute and the availability of affordable housing. There's probably a big correlation between success, retention, enrollment and those factors. And so I get, look, not every survey can do everything. But those would be the questions that I'm looking at as well as how many hours are you working? And how many hours are you parenting? Or are you parenting? I was curious to know about the conclusions that your team is drawing between this survey and then the underlying thing that we're asking about tonight, which is enrollment management. What, what inferences can we draw that then we can begin to test out and say, we have a theory that this is a factor? Now we've got data. Let's see. If we do something, if we change something in that data or in that, you know, in the availability of resources or some aspect of campus climate, do we get a change? And so I'm, I'm, I'm really glad you, you've got to start here. I think if the Office of Institutional Research would make the underlying questions and the data available on your website so that everybody in the district can look at this and put their brains to work. Maybe you've already got that and that would be fabulous. If so, if you could make that available through the chancellor to the board, that would be fabulous. Those are the kind of questions that I have, particularly whether you've been able to correlate any of these responses then to individual students and then draw inferences about success and retention. And if you're not able to do that on this one, maybe you could on the next one. So that we could then go down into the academic record and then anonymously look at at the outcomes versus their experiences. Any thoughts you have on any of that, I would be grateful for. And again, thank you. I love researchers and I love looking at the data. So thanks.
No, thank you for that, trustee Ewing. Those are great points. And I think that's a really good opportunity for our next research steps, especially getting back to some of those questions. I definitely want to include those in the focus groups that we plan to do to kind of get more background from the students about, as you mentioned, their working habits, their working hours, the courses they want to take to really delve deeper into that. So I think, I'm hoping the focus groups, what we get from there can really help illuminate that. And I, I agree, we, we, this is a great starting point. And I think we do want to tie it to outcomes, to programs, to different initiatives that are with the campuses and each of the colleges to see what kind of like outcomes we're seeing. So I think being able to tie this and with each subsequent survey and research study, we can start to build upon, upon that and, and really kind of really delve deeper into that and really decide where we should be allocating and putting our resources towards. So I'm all in favor of that. And yes, I look at this as just a starting point and beginning of our long-term research goals.
And, and my guess is you're probably already doing this, but to the extent that you are working hand in glove with, one, the college-level researchers and two, the key shared governance committees where they're trying to figure out these very questions on the ground, they've got theories of why they're doing what they're doing. If we can validate those theories with data, that's much better. So my guess is you're already doing that as you bring this pony, dog and pony show around the the district to share your results. But if you're not doing that, I would highly encourage that kind of integration. And again, thank you so much for your work.
Yes, absolutely. Oh, and to your other point, yes, we will be, the presentation and the data will be made available on the district IR website. And we will, we are collaborating with the college researchers going forward so as not to duplicate efforts and to be able to better inform each of the colleges and the district.
And excuse me, but I think we have a question from Vice President Koinlan.
Yes, I, I was wondering, are we going to go over the other documents or were those just background information around FTS and FTF calculations?
We can, we can do whatever you like. I, I know for some of the board members, this may be the first time you're seeing those. So we're, we're open. They're really for resource, but we can try to clarify anything that's there.
So my question concerns the calculations. Everything I saw was pretty much a straight, you know, three-unit class, three hours. Well, a very high percentage of our classes between our CTE classes and our science lab, the classes that have labs have a lab component that is not counted in the year, in the hours. It's counted as, you know, in the units. So if we have, for instance, my background, machine technology, we have a five-unit class with three hours of lecture and six hours of lab. And that's a model for many of the science classes also. So my understanding in terms of total contact hours using the WSCH, whatever that.
Wish.
Wish, wish we had one enrollment. The wish calculations, total contact hours is divided then by FTS, not just units divided by FTS. And I didn't see where that was count, you know, where those calculations were or how those calculations were specific, were made because my experience is that that pretty dramatically impacts our FT, our total FT, our productivity or efficiency or whatever you want to call it, rates.
I thought in the documents that we provided, there was one on how to calculate FTS. And I did use one on the hours and show, it's the sample, I don't have it here in front of me, but it's the one that has like multiple ways of calculating the FTS.
That was from the state, one on understanding and calculating FTS and efficiency. But it, it basically still, the, the second part of that equation is when you're calculating faculty hours as part of the FTF. So since we only get paid point eight for a lab, if I taught nine hours of class and six hours of lab, I would have a seven, seven, seven point eight load out of that. Yes, I looked at all of them.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it looks at the hours.
Helpful handout?
Yeah, I think it's a helpful handout. And I, I, it's the one where I showed different ways of calculating how you come up with the same number, no matter how, which way. And one of those is an example of using the. And one of those is an example of using the hours, the, the lecture and the lab hours. Doesn't care how much you get paid. It cares about, we care about that, of course, because different colleges have different load based upon the, if it's a lab or if it's a lecture, but it looks at the total hours. And so using the calculation for the total hours would be able to figure out what the FTF is for that. Oh, FTS, excuse me. And, and if you want, you know, one of us, or I can get a VPI, probably Becky over at Laney would be the easiest. We'd probably be able to sit down and, and show you how that's calculated. It's done, I gave you the manual way of doing it. But trust me, we, we don't do that for our classes. It's done automatically, which is why it's so extremely important that we load that information into the system so it's calculated and then forwarded on so that our allocation is accurate. And for example, just to clarify, you're talking about lecture lab in a traditional course, but we also have uh computer labs that are open for students just to go in, you know, they have to clock in. And we calculate those summary hours and submit them to the state also.
Hopefully people are signing in.
And, and that's, yeah, that's the key. That's part of that data integrity report that I was talking about. Because not only did Deborah go in and look and see what our processes were, but she started training the staff. She had staff that worked on that, that informed those processes and procedures. So um that'll be at the next meeting to give you that next bite out of the, how to eat an elephant. Um, this was the first bite. Uh, last year was another bite. And then we'll bring in the data integrity, then we'll bring in the SCIF so you can understand that. Then we'll bring in the budget so you can see how all of that ties together. And then probably um after the enrollment management committee starts to work, because we've already made decisions for next year, then probably come back and give you an update in the fall um on how all of this integrates at the college level. You'll get a bit of that when we do the um educational master plans. But you'll, we'll have to plan to bring in the vice presidents to, to give you one, and we may need to do another special meeting just because it would make for a very long evening if we, we tried to do that in addition to doing all the work that the board has to do on closed session and, you know, consent calendar and action items. Um, that way we just focus on that. And it's more of a casual back and forth um between what the planning teams are at the colleges, which is integrated with faculty, staff, students when possible, and administrators. And they've also done those studies that you talked about, um, trustee Ewan, in terms of the focus groups. So they want it qualitative data, not just numbers.
So the second question I have, do we know what percentage of our classrooms in our, for all the facilities will actually hold four, thirty-five people?
We have that information. I don't have it on the top of my head right now, but all of that information is put into Fusion because the next step is to take that information from the educational master plan, from the district strategic plan, and do an assessment of our facilities. So say that Laney says, we want to go and provide at least forty percent of our classes by a flex, but only five percent of their classrooms are flex. So that means that we have to have a discussion about the money that we have for Measure G. Is that going to build a new building, or is that going to go to modernize the buildings that we have? And again, those are college decisions, but the board hasn't approved those. So that's where that policy comes in versus the operational part. But if their educational master plan is saying that, and that has gone through the shared governance process, it's been, we've been working on it for eighteen months. It comes to the board. The board should not say, well, we don't think you want to do that. We, we think you should be happy with five percent. That's why I said, we don't tell the colleges what to do. But we ask those questions. How can you support? If you think you want, you know, an increase of twenty percent, how are you going to support that with the classrooms? Well, we've looked at our data. Our online has a waitlist. These are the areas that are going to be using it. They're successful. Their retention rate is good. That's the way it should work.
So the
And I know I'm preaching to the choir.
But the last question on some of the data, what I didn't see is any data based on success and retention around online and in-person.
We do have that.
Yeah, we do have that. I, it just wasn't included in this presentation, but we can put that together for you.
That would be really helpful. Are there any other questions in the boardroom? Thank you, BP Quinlan. Um, are there any other questions in the boardroom?
Yes, thank you, President. I, um, I want to go back to the climate survey. I'm curious as to how, um, I just, uh, thinking about the shared governance structure and the faculty um that are closest to them, classified staff that are closest to the students. Uh, if we were able to gather information from them about the types of questions we wanted to ask and the kind of data. So for instance, if a faculty member is saying, I'm hearing um from my students that really the challenge is about staying at our childcare, or I'm hearing I have, they have to work part-time, or they've moved, had to move full-time. So therefore that informs some of the questions that are being asked. And then the data comes back and comes to us, but also goes back to the shared governance structures. And I'm wondering if that happened, or if you have plans for that in the, in the future.
I think that goes towards our, having more collaboration with the colleges. Um, because I am aware of some surveys that the colleges are, have done, that um that weren't in, that we weren't aware of. So I, I think we, we did for our survey, after we developed our questions, we did send it out to various, um, the academic sentience for each of the colleges, unions, PFT, to get feedback on the questions. So um we gave them, you know, we only got some feedback. Um, so we were only able to, from certain groups, so we incorporated that as we were making it. But I think, yes, I think we do need to have more um sort of collaboration with the college and college researchers. Um, because I know they're conducting their own surveys, and we're sort of doing our own survey. And so I think we need to kind of, especially not to over-survey students. I think we really do need to collaborate and develop more of a standard survey schedule. And so that way, and then that way, the district, we're aware of what other surveys and focus groups are having at the colleges. And that way, we can kind of, I think, better get, get better data, get better information uh from the students uh and and lead to better outcomes, I think.
Just uh to add briefly to what Dr. Herro just said, however, I would like to uh commend him and his office and Dr. Droker as well. There have been some times when Laney has put out surveys, and uh they've just been an incredible help working with us. So just publicly, I'd like to say thank you.
Just, I just wanted, maybe for clarification, what you're saying, what I think I hear you saying. My researcher part coming out is that really you want us to try to triangulate what we're hearing from students and say, hey, faculty, staff, look at the survey. Is this what you're hearing? This is what the people that we surveyed said. So help us validate if indeed this is accurate. And if you have other things that you're hearing that aren't on this list, and, and please identify that. And, and to do it in a silent norming so that, you know, you don't sit around in a group and fill it out, but this is what I'm hearing. And then we tabulate that to see if that correlates with what we're getting from students. Is that what I think I thought I heard?
Yes, and I think surveys are only as good as the questions, right? I want to make sure we have the questions right. I think that this is really um important information. I want to know how much it tells me about retention and why people are staying or why people are leaving. And so um, so really getting to, are we asking the right questions? What are we hearing on the ground? Let's probe into that further by asking these three questions. Um, and really, you know, really getting the information that we want back. Uh, and so I'm, yeah, I'm curious a little bit about how these questions were developed and, and what direction you were trying to uh head with them, but you know, yeah.
Yeah, our surveys, uh, this climate survey was at the request of the Board of Trustees. So at District IR, we only do surveys that are at the request of the board. And the pre, they had asked, we do a climate survey to better inform around these specific topics. So in this survey, um, we just wanted to focus more on sort of um the topics that we covered, the student services side, about what's utilizing students, um, about study spaces. Um, so that was kind of the focus of this survey. The previous survey we did last spring was more of an enrollment management survey. Um, so we asked more students about what courses they were interested in taking, what time of day, what mode of instruction. So uh we're just, um, but I do like that idea. I would love to do the next survey, get more about retention, about what, you know, why are students interested, you know, if they didn't return? What are they hoping to take? Is it courses not being offered, specific times of day? Um, and so those are something we will sort of delve into that in our focus groups. But I think that would make a very rich survey um as a next step.
President Delphine Polk.
Go ahead.
Can I just make a quick correction?
Sure, of course.
The board obviously does not direct the Office of Institutional Research. Um, that's only the Chancellor. We, we might make a request to the Chancellor and, and at her discretion, uh, that office might take action. Just clarifying. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. It's important.
Yes. Sorry, sorry, I misspoke. I just meant, I didn't mean that they, yes, I'm sorry about that. I only mentioned the board mentioned a survey, and so we took action.
I, I knew that's what you meant, but I don't know that the public knew that.
Yeah, and, and just even further clarification, the board said, we'd like to find out more information about our students. That was how it was couched. And so um I said, well, we can conduct a survey and I'll talk to institutional research, what are the areas that you're interested in? And that was how we came up with this particular survey, based upon the last survey that we did.
I almost forgot my question because of your clarification, Nikki, but thank you. Um, so the two items that, if you could bring that to the next board meeting when we talk about this. And one is the conversation or the controversy with FTF and FTS. And um I don't think that we've actually had maybe a, a more kind of uh current conversation about it might be good. And the second question that I have is, I'm looking at your handout, and I know that we've been using seventeen-point-five as our productivity. But then as I look at the calculations on the bottom, it says twenty-one-point-twenty-five. That's just for the purposes of calculation, right? Or that's not our new productivity? Okay, okay. Yeah, that would have been difficult. Okay.
What I wanted to do in the, those resource documents was to give a variance. And, and I say in there somewhere that thirty-five, which is seventeen-point-five, which is half, um, is why we use that, because you have that for the fall semester, you have that for the spring semester, that's your thirty-five. So, because we are funded on an academic year, um, including summer. But usually, we put summer off to the side because you can use summer uh in your calculations. If you're low, you can move summer to the spring. Or you can leave summer so that it's part of the next academic year. You just have to have a, some courses that start in June to be able to use summer. And that's just uh uh flexibility that the state allows us. Um, so if you're close to what your target is, and you say, there was extra funding um for the benefit of our, our newer trustees, sometimes there's been extra funding at the state level in the old model. Not the new model going for it with SCIF, but they had old models and they set targets. And if we met our target, and we said, we think we can carry this over next year, and there was money available, we could roll summer into spring and get those additional funds from the state. Um, that is going away, unfortunately. Um, but that, I don't know how they're going to do it with SCIF. There's a to be seen. Um, still some things um on SCIF that we're, that the CEOs are working on in the state.
I think that would be good to have at our next meeting, um, just to echo what trustee B said. Just to kind of go over all of those terms for the benefit of the newer trustees as well. And then to kind of place everything that we're talking about in terms of budget, um, moving forward, just in that context.
Okay. It may not be at the next one, there's
Yeah, next session, whenever we decide to.
Yeah, well, we, next board meeting, our next regular board meeting, while we have a little bit of time, is we're looking at OPEB bonds. Um, you're going to get two presentations on that. Um, bring some coffee. It, it, it's detail, but you need to understand that, uh, because it has some bearing. And, and trustee Withrow is very well aware of that. Um, and it also affects our other post-employment bonds, which funds our retirees that pro, that has been coming in saying on the, so it's important in that respect. And we're also going to give you an update on the Chancellor's search um regarding the um, the calendar. We've had to make up some adjustments to that. Um, the survey results will be coming to you consolidated and presented on the priorities for the new Chancellor. And uh Dr. Benjamin will be providing that information. And then, like I said, we have the, another bite of the pie with the data integrity report by Deborah Lunsford uh will be coming. So we'll have three presentations. Um, I think the Chancellor's search might not take that long, but um it is going to be an important meeting to discuss those things. And, and some of them require action, some of them were just informational.
And, and when will our retreat be? Because I'm looking forward to the conversation.
We do need to establish the date for the retreat because it's not on the calendar. We did it last year in July.
Yeah.
Um, we did it in July. That gives us chance to, to get everything ready because the board has, is dark during the month of August. Um, and then also, we're going to the four-fives like we have in the past. Um, that starts four-fives, four-tens. It's been a long day, um, four-tens. And so um because of that, we usually did it in the, in the summer. And, but we can do it whenever. We just need to poll everyone to make sure that they're available during that time because it's, it's where you're setting your goals for next year and reviewing our goals for this year. And like I said, I have some things um that I'd like to present to the board that are a little outside the box. Um, and I'm not trying to be provocative, but I need to get the data together to be, to be able to give you a full picture. Um, so.
Sasha has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, Chancellor, I just wanted to confirm right now, um, based on our calendar, we have the board retreat scheduled for Tuesday, July eleventh.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So if that isn't going to work, and usually what we do with the board retreat, we start early um right after lunch, um, and go from like one to five. If that's possible, now that we know it's July the eleventh.
Are there any other questions or comments on our presentation today? Well, I want to thank Dr. Vasconcelos and Dr. Arera for giving us such great information um during this Enrollment Academy. I think it's really informative for all of us to see what the trends are and where we could start um coming up with solutions for our enrollment.
And we
Thank you.
And we beat our time, President Delphine Polk. We said till eight-thirty. We're letting you out thirty minutes ahead of time.
And I do hope that you all know that this was really helpful.
Yes, it was very helpful.
We got a lot of information, and I think um lots of points of discussion. So that was very helpful.
A lot of food for thought, too. Um, okay, and with that, we can adjourn. Thank you so much again, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. And if you have any questions, just let us know.